The recording's on.
Okay, it's seven o'clock according to my watch. So in respect of everybody's time, we're going, I call the July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four regular board meeting of Glencoe Park District to order. Lisa, please call the roll and state the time.
Right at seven o'clock. Commissioner Bourne?
Yeah.
Commissioner Koby? Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Commissioner Spector?
Here.
President Spain?
Here. Consent agenda items A through D are routine. Does any commissioner want any item pulled from the consent agenda items? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bourne?
Yes.
Commissioner Koby?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Spector?
Yes.
President Spain?
Yes, I do see that we do have members at the public present. Are any of you interested in addressing the board at this time? Okay, let me read a little bit about what, how it goes. Um, no, that's all right. So is our practice not to address questions at this time? However, we do take comments under advisement. And there's a limit of three minutes per person. So the meeting is being recorded. Do we have a microphone for our guests that they can use, or if you want to?
If you pick your line, I will sit elsewhere.
Sounds good. No worries.
Do you need a moment? Yeah, we just, it's just recorded, so it'd be great if you would just have access.
You just come right up there and sit on Nancy's seat, so we can just sit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That's right. Please don't tell me how old he is because I saw the acknowledgement to Jackie Kazoka, which I thought was wonderful. Thank you. And I taught with her for a few years as well in the Koala Camp Program. So my name's Barb Padiak. I live at eleven seventy Terrace Court. Just a stone throw away from here. And I appreciate all the work you do for the Park District. I do a lot of nannying and babysitting. I work with kids with disabilities and I enjoy that I can bring them all to the parks we have. And there's a variety of parks that have been done in the past that accommodate kids with disabilities and special needs and typical kids who just want to play. So thank you. I was just wondering, and it's more just kind of a questioning, it's about the beach. And I think, Bobby, that's kind of you, right? So I was wondering and noticing that there's a lot of empty time for the shelters. And I'm wondering if you track that, people using them. It seems as though it's a little unfriendly right now to me personally as a resident and probably even more so to non-residents. The cost to rent a shelter for even just a lunchtime, you know, there doesn't seem to be a middle ground, and so they just sit there empty. And it used to be that people would enjoy them. And I'm wondering if consideration and a little thought should go into the structure, the fee structure, the usage structure, and that it would be so much nicer to see them used as opposed to sitting empty because people don't want to pay fifty bucks or a hundred. And I have talked briefly with some of my neighbors, and they also expressed some surprise and say with the new fee structure, they used to go down with their family and enjoy and last minute dinner or something. And they don't do it anymore. It's kind of changed the dynamics of the community's use of the shelters. So, you know, I'm just coming at this cold because it's just been on my mind, and I thought, I know you're not meeting in August. So I'm just wondering if that could be looked at as, just to be more friendly to the community members. Especially, yeah, especially with the, I tell you, you know, just to be empty and have the beaches full and have them like blocked off.
Thank you. I know I have, I'm trying to adhere to the three minutes, but I understand your comment. And currently tonight, that's not on the agenda as an special item, but we really appreciate your comment. And I will, I will tell you from on behalf of the board, we've had a lot of discussions about beach passes and accessibility. And we discuss every year, you know, the fee structure for rentals, beach passes, and we appreciate your comments and will keep that in mind.
And then just real quickly, I know that you're looking into the referendum. And I just do have a question that maybe after this question, you can answer it. You've done a lot without a referendum in the past. And I'm wondering, what is, this might be too hard to answer quickly, but what is the biggest difference between then and now with all the work the Park District has done? And, and I'm just catching up because I've been busy, so I apologize.
Let me enter?
Yeah. I mean, I can answer it. You can answer it.
I'm going to answer one thing for the first question is that we have a Lakefront Advisory Committee. And what's the date? August nineteenth. August nineteenth. It's usually held at the beach unless it rains at six, was it six o'clock? Six thirty. So I recommend that if you have those concerns, we want to give input on the beach, that's another great avenue. We have a Lakefront Advisory Committee made up of residents that look at all these different issues, and you can bring up that at that time. So.
And I guess I'll address the referendum. I think that, you know, we have a significant backlog of projects, and we had actually kind of kept in mind that this referendum was an opportunity to do it. So for example, we have one of the projects that's on our list is an eleven million dollar project to redo our parks facility, which is sizable. And that's not, that is for our, we have a hundred-year-old facility. You know, the wiring isn't up to date. This is for all of our parks equipment. We can't update to EVs, for example, because the wiring isn't adequate. And if I took you on a tour, you would see there's dirt floors still in our garages. And that's just not the sort of projects that we can fund out of our operating budget. We do a lot of work over time to apply for grants and get donations, and certain projects don't really fit the bill for that sort of funding. But we have a twenty-two million dollar backlog of capital projects, and that's something that we can't just simply fund out of our operating budget. The take a center that we're in right now had been funded with a referendum. And so this gives us the right time and something that we had kind of planned in our long-term capital plan to go to referendum to fund some of our projects now. And we're able to do that without raising taxes. So just keep that tax levy flat. So that's why the timing, the timing is for right now. So basically, that, that is kind of built into our capital plan, and a lot of municipalities do that because our operating levy is capped by five percent, our inflation. So we can't just raise taxes without going to a referendum to cover bigger projects. And so it's really just kind of continuing our capital funding structure that we have in place. So yes, we're going to keep funding additional parks projects. We've had discussions about, you know, friends parks, other parks that in improvements that we'll do out of our fund balance or operating levy or other funds, but it's just not enough to fund the amount of capital needs that we have. Is that helpful?
That is helpful. And I know I've, seeing that I live in the community, I know that you've had big hopes and plans for the area back there and redoing equipment and stuff. And I guess it's just that my tax bill went up twenty-five percent this year. And so I know you're saying you're not raising taxes per se, but there will be an additional of the referendums.
Well, well, I could address that. Yeah. So for the referendum, basically what the way it's set up, and I feel your pain, mine went up significantly too, and it went up last year.
I think everybody's.
Everyone's did. There's a number of things. So it should be, it should be flat at most. If we didn't do the referendum, you would get back roughly two hundred and sixty dollars. So that's kind of the size of the tax relief, but it won't increase because of it. Any sort of increase related to the referendum would have to do with just if your property values increase more than your neighbors. So we can't say that there will never, there will not be any tax increase, but it's a set dollar amount. So we're setting it to keep our levy flat over time as a whole, right? It's a fourteen point seven million is what we're voting on today. And that's over all of our Glencoe residents. Now, how does that get distributed over the twenty-five-year life of the bond? Maybe in some years, your assessed value goes up more than your neighbors and your tax bill goes up. Maybe your neighbor's bill goes up and your taxes go down. So there's fluctuations, but overall, our levy to pay the debt service on an annual basis, overall, the Glencoe residents will not increase. So it's, it's relatively minor. And one of the reasons why we kept it at the level that we're voting on today is because we understand, nobody, nobody wants another tax increase, and I feel it. I feel it too.
Sure.
Related to what we pay service our day should not increase. Other day, increase. But the taxes to pay off debt should not increase. Is that the right way?
That is correct. And Carol's explanation was excellent, too, in terms of how the tax bill works specifically for the Park District. The only thing I would add is that, you know, the Park District is a very small portion of your tax bill. It's about seven percent. So when you see those, right? So when you do see those, you know, large increases, to Carol's point, it could be just the way the valuation was compared to your neighbors, but it also could be those other taxing districts, which might not necessarily be under the same PTO cap that we have that are increasing, you know, beyond the five percent or inflation which we're capped by.
Great. Well, thank you. I appreciate that information because I've been trying to qualify that as to my future, going into my retirement phase of life, which I don't know that that will ever happen, but.
No, I understand.
You know, just to understand how that works. And you have done a great job with the parks and everything. Thank you, without raising taxes. So there has been a lot of planning in the past, and I appreciate that.
And we intend to keep on, you know, going for grants, donations. None of that's going to stop. Just so we know, we can't fund some of these large, larger ones without doing this.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I know we have one other member here. Do you have similar comments or additional comments to make? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate your questions, and we'll take back your feedback into account. And if there's anything else, you know, you can also send an email to the, to the board. Okay, moving on, we have the report, the financial report, and John will share a synopsis of the report and answer any questions.
Right. Thank you, President Spain. In lieu of the standard financial report for tonight's meeting, I put together a presentation here to just go over. We wrapped up our fiscal quarter one projections last month. So I just put together a quick summary as to what we're, what those projections are looking like as of right now. As a reminder, our fiscal year end is February twenty-eighth. So this is covering March through May. Just starting here with a quick recap of what our budget timeline is looking like for this fiscal year. So we really kind of kicked things off at the beginning of May with our management team to go over the process specifically around projections and budget worksheets and things of that nature. And this is ultimately going to lead us to the budget and appropriation ordinance approval at the April of two thousand and twenty-five board meeting. And then that gets submitted by May thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-five. And again, that's going to provide us with our legal authority to spend funds as Park District. So this next slide here provides a high-level summary of where we stand from our fiscal twenty-five budget compared to now, what we're projecting one quarter into our fiscal year, just taking you down to all the way to the bottom row here. So we had initially budgeted an eight hundred and fourteen thousand dollar excess revenue over expenditures across all of our funds. That number's now slightly above one point two million, so about a three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollar difference. If you, if you look at some of the departments or funds that are creating that, that increase, you'll primarily see in the recreation fund, we went from four hundred and forty-four thousand to six hundred and eighty-nine thousand, and that's driven primarily by our very strong rec programming that I'll get into more detail on the next slide on. So rec programming was, we're projecting an additional three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in revenue. Kids Club obviously is really off the charts. Game On Camp for Girls, we increased by about a hundred and five thousand dollars. Action Quest, we also increased by about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So again, our rec programming is just knocking it out of the park right now. And that's obviously reflected here in these financials. On the expense side, the only thing to really point out, at least this early in our fiscal year, is that we did have some favorable health insurance elections for some of our new hires, which allowed us to bring down our projected medical insurance expense for the, for the rest of the fiscal year. As far as capital projects go, you'll notice, you may have noticed that we're about ninety-five thousand dollars below what we were budgeting. So good news there, and that's driven primarily by the IT capital. If you remember, we had moved on from Excaltech and switched over to L six technology back in March. And we've been absolutely, absolutely thrilled with their service thus far. They've been doing a fantastic job just operationally. That's what they've been focused on, you know, in these early stages of our relationship with them. But one thing that they did note is that they felt our servers were not in need of replacement this, this fiscal year, and they're kind of taking a different approach to capital, capital spending, which we've been working with them on. But we, if you remember, back to our budget over the winter, Excaltech was recommending that we replace our physical servers here to the tune of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we've really taken that down. Certainly, L six has made some recommendations to our network and some of the equipment that we're using, our switches, our routers, things of that nature. But what it has allowed is for us to not necessarily eliminate this expense, but potentially spread it out over future fiscal years based on their, their approach with our servers and versus cloud and so on and so forth. And those are obviously discussions that we continue to have with them. Our tri-deck mower came in about thirty thousand dollars under what we had budgeted for, and also the skate lot lighting. Kyle and his team were able to find a solution. We had initially budgeted fifteen thousand dollars, but it's looking like we're going to spend about five thousand dollars to address that need back there. As far as our master plan capital transfer goes, we did this month, July, transfer over the two million dollars that we had committed for at the end of our previous fiscal year to twenty-nine, twenty-four. So one point two million of that came from the recreation fund. Eight hundred thousand came out of the general fund or the corporate fund. So that two million dollar transfer is combined with the previous nine years to get to a total of eleven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've transferred over from fund balance excess into our master plan capital project fund. So if projecting out right now, based on these updated numbers, we're anticipating having approximately five point nine million dollars in the capital project fund, master plan fund sixty-nine at February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. So thinking to the heat sheets and the twenty-two, twenty-three million dollars in deferred capital, you know, there's, there's about six million of it there. Of course, the referendum is on the agenda for this evening, and then the grants and donations that we had talked about to hopefully get that fully funded. So a quick update on property taxes, as many of us mentioned tonight, our bills are in the, in our mailboxes and ready to be paid, which might not be, or we might not be as enthused from a personal standpoint, but the district, what that, what that does mean, though, is that the district is going to return to its normal property tax collection cycle. If you remember, the past two years, we've had significant delays with a compatibility, computer compatibility issue at the county clerk's office. So that has been addressed, and we have received basically all of our first installment of property taxes. Three, three point three million we've received thus far. Our total budget is about six point seven million dollars. So we're about halfway there, and we would expect to receive the remainder, or a bulk of the remainder of the budgeted revenues here within the August and September timeframe. So our property taxes will be looking good, and again, back on, on track to the cycle that we're used to seeing. That's just a quick, high-level update on our quarter one, fiscal quarter one projections. So if I, if there's any questions, comments, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you for putting that together.
Sure.
That's great.
Just going to the, to the camps, and I know we'll do a readout of the camps afterwards, but I know we switched the grades this year for Action Quest. Do we think that played into the extra revenue at all?
Absolutely. So it's almost double the revenue for Action Quest compared to last year. So obviously adding that fifth grade made a big difference than the flexibility parents have. I think we're, we're really seeing kids sign up for one and two weeks and then extending into three and four weeks. So revenue and enrollment continues to grow. If you ask me, do I expect that next year? I'm not quite sure yet. It really is through the roof. It's almost one of the largest camps we have now. Traditionally, it was quite a small camp. We think it's in large part got to the change in the grades.
Okay.
And our sun fund numbers are still.
Very strong.
The same as.
All of our camps.
Last year. Yeah. So we didn't see a dip just because we changed age group.
Do you, do you think it's the, the programming or more of the value-conscious decision?
I think it's a combination of both, but I think the value in this market, people are seeing the value and staying local. And when you compare it to some of the other camps, it's a very strong value. We are seeing, and we'll report to the board in our camp, that a lot of South Highland Park families are signing up as well. It's not massive amounts, but there's a, the value, it's cheaper than surrounding park districts for some of the extended care. So we're seeing some additional revenue there. But Glencoe residents, it's very popular.
And for Kids Club, because of our new space, like, how many more students are we able to accommodate now?
We're getting, we're getting pretty close to being like, having to look at alternatives. We don't want to turn anybody away. So there's, I think it's almost thirty-five more than last year signed up. We'll put the caveat, though, as we move towards September, parents start to realize, maybe my kid can stay home a little bit by themselves, or maybe we'll do an activity. So they might shift from five days down to three days. I mean, that happened last year, but we've opened up additional space on the bottom floor to be able to, to divide up the age groups, so it's more age-appropriate, a little bit more focused on age-appropriate play activities and games, but also getting homework done, given the extracurricular activities that some of the older kids have with travel sports and other activities. So we're working on expanding into that bottom classroom, but we're basically going to be in three spaces at Weinberg now.
Are there any issues with staffing for that many kids?
We've been pretty lucky. At this point, no, we're pretty confident. Ms. Carrie does a great job of recruiting people. A lot of them have been through the program and been with camp. So at this point, no, we wouldn't have accepted off the waitlist if we weren't confident we could, we could staff.
That's excellent. I feel like that's a big change in the, in the camp staff compared to our discussions just two years ago.
You're a hundred percent right. This is the first year where we've actually been able to be picky and make sure that we can hire, and we've actually turned a lot of people away. A lot of people left it to the last minute this year, and we turned a lot of kids away. But we're hoping they, they apply earlier next year.
Excellent. Additional questions? Okay, next we have an update on the final tax extension. And John, that's you again.
Yep. So as I mentioned, now that we are back on our normal property tax cycle, we did get our final extended, extended rates for the two thousand and twenty-three levy, which is the taxes we're collecting this year. The second installment of the two thousand and twenty-three levy is what's due now in everybody's mailbox. So this was not a reassessment year. If you remember, last year was our major reassessment year where our EAV went up well over thirty percent. So this year, our EAV increased slightly. While it's five million dollars compared to the total, it's a very small increase this year, less than half a percent. So with the increase in EAV, we also saw our tax rate stay pretty consistent, went from point five four to point five eight, five eight one. So a very modest change there also. Our budget compared to our final extended rates looks to be pretty close. We budgeted, if we were to receive, we budgeted six million, seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars this year, and our total extended, final extended rates are six million, eight fifty-one. So what that means is if, if we were to collect one hundred percent of extended taxes, we would receive a little over a hundred thousand dollars more than what we had budgeted. Obviously, there is, our collection rate is usually, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. So we'll be pretty close to there, but we won't collect the, the full one hundred and nine thousand dollars. So that's, again, EAV, slight increase in EAV, tax rate generally the same, and the potential to collect a little over an additional one hundred thousand dollars than what we had budgeted for.
Thank you. And if there aren't any questions from the board, I think we can move forward with the executive director report.
Excellent. So the staff has been busy getting ready for the district accreditation. Our review will be late October, late October, middle of October. And we have shown that we've met all the standards by the August first deadlines in order to be approved and moved on for that review, which will be done by executive directors and commissioners throughout the state. Erin and I are firming up, we did firm up a date for a task force, which Carol and Bart will serve on as a board to discuss the next referendum, referendum informational pieces that will go out. And we invited a few residents, and once that's done, the board, the rest of the board will get that document also. The comprehensive plan is, is finally, is being in its final tweaking stages, and hopefully be sent to the board on August twentieth, probably hopeful acceptance that night. You'll get the, you'll get the packet more a week before. We're finalizing some other things from our landscape architect and Bear Construction. So we'll get that to you as soon as possible. In record planning on August fifth, our parks and planning, August fifteenth, we're going to do a West Park Community Meeting on that site for the OSAT grants, and then we'll report back on the August twentieth meeting, the input from that. And for rec and facilities, I'm going to throw it over to Bobby.
As we were just saying, camp has been going very, very well. Enrollment is strong, as we talked about. Kids are having a great time. We have put the survey out to parents and started to collect for the children or the participants who were in the first four weeks. So far, the survey results have come back very positive. We're heading towards the end of week six. Out of eight, we're for regular camps. So regular camp finishes August second, and then we have some Summers End, and we have Camp Kids Club towards the end of August as well. So we're very happy. We're about to start our debrief, planning for next year, believe it or not, already. So we're starting that next week. To celebrate the end of summer, we are having a camp family night, which is going to be at Berlin Park this year. Given that we've over four hundred campers invited, we need to use a larger space and cock. So it's going to be Wednesday, July thirty-first, from six thirty to eight. Everybody's welcome. And we're going to have some food trucks, DJ, face painting, dunk tanks, inflatables, really great way to send off summer and get everybody together. It's also a great opportunity for the community to get some information about the potential referendum. So we're going to have a table at that. If any commissioner would like to be there, please let Lisa or myself know, and we can make sure to, President Spain is interested. So.
I'll be there anyway.
So great. So that'll be a great opportunity to educate anybody who has any questions on the referendum, but also be fun for our campers. The beach attendance has been up. If you saw in the board report, I think we're up three thousand visits compared to last year as of the end of June. Both pass and daily fees have been up. The weather has been very mixed. We've had some hot weather. We've had some very rainy weather, which leads to significant runoff through the whole of the North Shore, which impacts the water quality, not just that our beach, but it comes down through the waves. So we've had some water quality challenges today, yesterday, and a couple earlier on in the, in the season. Hopefully, those are passing by. We had to postpone the cardboard regatta due to the water quality. So we'll look to reschedule that. Camps will be probably doing their own cardboard regatta. And then tomorrow, you, if you, if you hear or see or down at the beach, Public Safety is doing some safety drills on the water. So there'll be dive teams from multiple different units of local government from the North Shore and west of us. So that's, that will be going out in communication to the, to residents, but it's not an emergency. It's just a training drill, which is great to see. Beach campout is also Friday night, so starts at six o'clock. Weather looks absolutely spectacular in the low seventies and early sixties in the middle of the night. So that will be great. We have about three hundred and thirty people signed up at this point. So it's going to be a really fun evening. Hopefully, the weather stays good.
Are you going to be there?
I'm going to be there.
All right.
I tested our camping equipment in the. I tested our camping equipment in the basement Monday night, and I feel like I need a different mat and pad, but hopefully the sand will be nicer than my
Sand is nice.
Floor.
No, no.
I don't think my kids will let me. I think, I think it's, it's the things we do for our children.
Right.
It's part of it.
To clear all the rocks out. Okay, I'll bring, I'll bring a yoga mat too.
Hey, Bobby, how are we, how are we doing financially on the beach? Are we?
I expect us to pretty much break even, which is right
Break even?
Yep.
Okay, that's better than what we did pre-pandemic, if I'm correct?
Better than pre, pre-pandemic.
Not, obviously, since during the pandemic, it was a, it was a hot commodity, but, and do we, how are we feeling about the access policies? Not necessarily the beach shelter policies, but just the access policies, the access policies themselves.
I don't have the data to, to give to the board on the actual museum pass yet. We will obviously get that. Anecdotally, I can tell Representative Morgan, let us know that their passes have been checked out a number of times. It's been very popular.
Good.
And they posted on social media, and I do know families have been calling about the library pass and have been utilizing that. So obviously, we'll present that.
Yeah.
And we'll get the complete beach report then this season again.
Yeah, I just, when you were saying that we're having more people coming, I was curious to know the correlation between the access policies and, and that increase in visitors.
And I should know this, and I can Google it, but what do we charge? Because people have been posting online, and this can't be correct. So what's our daily rate again?
$12 for residents and 24 for non-residents.
But then the pass is 36 for residents, $36 for all you can access.
Yes.
Which is, which is fairly reasonable, I think.
Well, especially compared to, yeah, okay. Yeah, someone posted something weird.
Yeah, you may have also saw in the packet in the news about Lake Bluff. It's an interesting article to read if you have time, just about, they've kind of had to make mid-season adjustments to their pricing. So because of the number of visitors who came, so they've kind of followed more in line with what we're doing.
And then with the training going on tomorrow, is our water still open? Okay.
All right. Any other questions for Bobby? Okay, Erin can talk about the fall brochure.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a little bit late. Hopefully, it'll be out tomorrow. We're not pleased with our printing service right now, so we will be examining that next year, but it is available online.
So it's online, the brochure's online, but the delivery to the homes, physical copy has been delayed. So hopefully, we'll have that tomorrow, and we are going to be looking at other vendors in the future, because this is the second time we've had to delay, and, and we're not happy, so. Erin will be doing that. Thank you all. We came out for July 3rd and 4th and participate, played in the parade. We really appreciate that. Staff did an amazing job yet again. And Erin, do you have the data of, of how many people came to the park? Jesus, it's spooky how she gets all this stuff. I put her on the spot here.
It was 4,700 people were in the park that evening, so first 3,000 the year before, so a pretty significant increase.
It seemed more crowded. But very safe.
That's strange, because it's like, I, I commented that it seemed less, like there was space, and last year seemed really crazy, and this year didn't, so that's strange.
People set up earlier. I think it was in, by the mid-30% were residents. So there was, obviously, I think the word is out that our fireworks are excellent as well.
They also looked at other towns, and 30% is about average for the fireworks of residents.
Yeah. I think Will Matt was about, almost 15,000 for their
With about 30% registered.
That's interesting. That's, that's
But they, I, this was the first time seeing people set up chairs that early. You know, I was out there at 3:30, and it was, all the front spots were already taken, so it was a good crowd. And we adjusted some of our games on the tennis courts to make it a little less hectic. I think that showed, the playground still gets amazing use on the 4th, or July 3rd, so.
I really appreciate how safe the playground is for the 4th of July event. I know we spent a lot of time when we designed the park about the height of the structures, and I think for the crowds that we see, it's a really good arrangement.
Yeah, I agree.
Did we use the same vendor? Because the fireworks were really
Same vendor.
Same vendor.
Same vendor.
They were excellent.
Must have been the music selection.
Band was great, so.
Actually, the band was, the band was, was, was pretty good. I thought the band was good. It was actually, I commented on someone, it was nice to see a very diverse cloud, crowd here in Glencoe. I think it, I think it adds to the festivities, so I think it's great that we have some residents and non-residents. A lot of people came in with family and friends as well, so it was, it's a nice time to showcase and show off Glencoe.
For, just for your knowledge, in, in the packet is, in appendix, A and B is some more in-depth information about the, the projected revenue and things for camp and, and other programs, so take a look at that. Is there any further questions on that?
Do we have numbers on the parade too? Because that seemed pretty well-attended, just wondering from last year.
I could find it.
Okay.
We don't run that one, so we don't really
Sure. I'm just going to make a comment. So the next item on agenda is the resolution, so I, I know that we had somebody walk in. So Lisa is going to introduce the referendum, and then I, I'd like to open up for additional opportunity for public comment, if there is, and comments are limited to three minutes, if there's additional comments specific to the referendum. So Lisa, go ahead.
Excellent. I know we went in depth at the committee meeting two weeks ago, so I'm going to keep this brief, and any questions the boards want for the follow-up. But as we know, the board is committed to maintaining the quality of our current assets, limiting the burden on taxpayers, and enhancing property values through preserving Glencoe's iconic beach and parks. The proposed bond referendum would protect and improve some of our most important public assets, including our beach, parks, and athletic fields. It aims to create efficiencies and cost savings through the construction of a new parks maintenance facility that is currently over 100 years old, all without increasing the current debt service tax burden. If approved, the referendum would address the 14.7 million, would address 14.7 million of the Park District's 22 million in outstanding infrastructure needs. The remaining capital projects would be funded through fund balances, grants, and donations as funds allow. The district is able to secure new bonds without raising taxes because our existing long-term debt will be paid off in the near future. Despite our substantial needs, we have capped the request at 14.7 million, devoid any additional tax burden on homeowners. If the referendum is not placed on this file's ballot, property taxes would be decreased by approximately $261 annually per 1 million of home fair market value. However, due to construction inflation, if we were to lay, delay the proposed improvements, required maintenance would likely result in much higher price tag in the future. Since 2018, the Park District has maintained a AAA bond rating. The strong rating reflects our track record of sound financial management and responsible decision-making. It stands as a testament to our ability to navigate complex financial landscapes while keeping the best interests of our community at heart. Since April, we've been sharing information about the funding proposal with the community and taking their feedback into account. Our marketing, our communication strategy included outreach efforts, including mailers, community meetings, and, and a community survey, all since April. So the last four months, we've been, we, we've seen a lot of them. We presented the, the survey information at the committee meeting, and we showed that there was a overall support for the referendum. Any questions?
At this time, I'd like to open up to anybody who has any comments on the referendum. Okay, thank you. Okay, so just for those of you here, we had a very lengthy discussion on the referendum at our committee meeting. Very lengthy. Two weeks ago. So if it sounds, seems like we're just jumping ahead, it's because we've been discussing this for a long time and informed some consensus. So for this meeting, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Election Resolution 965, providing for and requiring the submission of the proposition to issue 14,740,000 general obligation park bonds to the voters of the Glencoe Park District, Cook County, Illinois, at the general election, to be held on the 5th day of November, 2024, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. So I just
Roll call?
Yeah.
Let's just do one little discussion. Agree that we had a very lengthy and fruitful discussion two or three weeks ago at our committee meeting, and just appreciative of all the time that we all spent on that. So thank you for spending so much time discussing this important matter.
Thank you, Michael. Okay.
I, I just wanted to double-check, we don't need to read the, we do not need to
Need to read the resolution. Okay, excellent. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Colby?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Spector?
Yes.
President Spain?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Yes. I entertain a motion to approve the updates made to the district safety manual as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mr. Colby?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Spector?
Yes.
President Spain?
Yes, motion passes. I entertain a motion to approve the annual treasurer's report for 2023 to 2024 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Colby?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Spector?
Yes.
President Spain?
Yes. I entertain a motion to cancel the August 6, 2024 committee meeting.
So moved.
Who's that moved? You moved? Okay.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Born?
Yes.
Commissioner Colby?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Spector?
Yes.
President Spain?
Yes. Lisa, do you have any other business?
I do not.
Okay. I do not at this time either, and there's no reason to enter and to close session.
Correct.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Lisa, please record the time.
7:42. Thank you all.
Thank you.